I call the Tuesday, July 9, 2019, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And I'll ask my colleagues on council to stand for the invocation as Pastor Camille Pencil of Crossroads United Methodist Church gives our invocation. After which, I'll ask everybody to stand as Councilman Bill Moody leads us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our Lord God of all of us, we come here this evening to conduct the business of this city. We come here to speak with each other, raise issues, to solve problems. So our request is that you are present in the room, that you guide our thoughts, our actions, our decisions, and most of all, that you keep each and every one of us, not just during this meeting, but as we depart. And together we say, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item is electronic roll call. And to my colleagues on council, please indicate your presence by hitting the yes button. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum, do we not? Next, we have the consideration of the approval of minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of June 24, 2019, the minutes of a call meeting of June 25, 2019, and the minutes of a regular meeting, June 25, 2019. We'll consider all three sets of minutes at one time.
Move and option.
We have a motion to approve, adopt the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question, all in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. We need to adjust our agenda. I'll ask everybody to direct their attention to, under new business, item 19-260, which item submitted by a city council, we need to remove the resolution from this agenda. We'll consider this matter as part of our legislative package for the next session of the General Assembly. Is there such a motion?
Move and option.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded to remove the resolution. It's under item 19-260 from tonight's agenda. Any discussion on the question? Ready for the question, all in favor, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Madam Clerk, will you read the protocol for speakers, please?
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your remarks at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum. It should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his/her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item are two public hearings, item 19-252. Our protocol for public hearings is this: these are two zoning applications. I'll ask the applicant if the applicant wants to explain the request. The applicant will have 10 minutes to address city council. After that, I'll call upon the city manager, and she may call upon our Mr. Baldwin. Then I'll open up the public hearing. You do not have to have signed up to speak at the public hearing. If you desire to speak, just come to the lectern, state your name and address, please. So with that, let's go to item 19-252A. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption for this public hearing, please?
Yes, sir. Item A, UP 19-08, Churchland. The Troy Parker of Parker Burner Real Estate Group requests a use permit for a Starbucks coffee shop and restaurant at 5901 West High Street. The property is owned by Cable &amp; Kim LLC and is located in the general mixed-use zoning district. The future land use map in the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates commercial use for the property. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions.
Again, this is a public hearing, and this matter's going to be on its first reading tonight. And at this time, I'll ask the applicant, if the applicant is present, to come to the lectern. Sir, you have 10 minutes. Will you identify yourself and your address, please?
Yes, sir. Hello, my name is Troy Parker. My office is at 1436 South Independence Boulevard in Virginia Beach, Virginia, with Parker Burner Real Estate Group, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Burke, and the rest of the councilmen. Thanks for the opportunity to represent the Cable &amp; Kim family, who couldn't be here tonight. One's dealing with an illness, one is still in China. But they have owned this property for 30 years. They actually operated the property, the gas station and auto repair business, for 30 years. I'm a partner in the shopping center directly behind the property. I've got to know them over the years. And basically, they came to us to find the best use for their half-acre parcel of land. So basically, we went to work, we identified some users. It's a very small site, you know, half acre with setbacks, gets really tight. But we were fortunate enough to get Starbucks to commit to the site, worked with the city staff to come up with a plan that worked, that eliminated two access points, there's currently four, and reduced them to two, pushed the buildings to the corner, worked with their design team to come up with a design that everybody was happy with. Is the clicker?
Can we suspend the time for...oh, we're good.
Okay.
I thought we had a technical problem.
Is someone else clicking this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, the first rendering here shows what the property is gonna, the building's gonna look like from the corner of High Street and Tyreneck Road. The facility does have a drive-through. That kind of shows the drive-through coming around, and that's the side that faces the And this faces the shopping center to the rear where Little Caesar's is located, and that's showing the covered patio area. Another view from Tyreneck. That's it? Okay, I'll prepare to answer any questions that anyone may have at this point.
Any member of council have any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, will ask Mr. Baldwin, Deputy City Manager over planning, to come forward.
And good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and members of council. I think you have a pretty clear picture of what this application's about. Just wanted to let you know that at their meeting on June 4, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item, and by a vote of four to zero, recommended approval with the conditions which are included in your transmittal information. Glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? And Mr. Baldwin? Thank you, sir. With that, I'll open the public hearing on UP-19-08. The public hearing is open. If you desire to speak either for or against, please come to the lectern, state your name and address, please. You'll have five minutes. This is a public hearing on UP-19-08. Do you desire to speak? See you, no one? This public hearing is closed. In order to consider this matter on its first reading, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question, all in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to UP-19-12. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption for this public hearing?
Yes, sir. BUP 1912, Paradise Creek Industrial Corridor. Stephen E. Heretic on behalf of Per Properties is requesting to amend a use permit approved on June 15 to operate a concrete processing facility, including the use of portable stone crushing equipment at 3991 Elm Avenue. The amendment requested is to eliminate the screening requirement to be installed on the southern boundary of the property, item 3F of Resolution R 1514, from the conditions approved by city council. The property is designated for heavy industrial uses on the city's comprehensive generalized future land use map. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, ma'am. And I'll ask any representative, the applicant, I think that's our delegate, Stephen Heretic, who is no stranger to this chamber.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's good to be back. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this comes for, on our request for an amendment to a conditional use permit council granted back in 2015, basically allowing the PER property development, as you see in the picture here with the diagram, which is located at the end of Elm Avenue, at the corner of Vineyard Road, which comes up straight and comes up to the right in that photograph. Eventually, this development is going to be utilized as a grain and bulk freight importation, exportation port. As part of the development plan for this site, the developer, Jim Salmons of Virginia Beach, has proposed and has received permission of this council to build a concrete plant to help him lay essentially the base foundation for the entire plan and for commercial use. That particular phase of the development is essentially complete. As council recalls back in its conditional use permit in June of 2015, one of the requirements was that the developer planned essentially a buffer of trees between that particular site and the adjacent EPA Superfund site on the Allied Wood site, which is located directly to the south of that property, right under the Jordan Bridge. We were notified in early May of this year from the Environmental Protection Agency that they will not permit the planting of a buffer zone. In other words, it's their position that we cannot disturb the buffer in any way, shape, or form, and therefore, we cannot effectuate the plannings that council has required us to do. It is for that limited purpose, Mr. Mayor, that we ask for an amendment, to delete only that portion of the conditional use permit going forward, and that's our limited request this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions of delegate Heretic?
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, I'll ask Mr. Baldwin, Deputy City Manager, to come forward.
Good evening, once again. Won't go over what you just heard. That's pretty straightforward explanation. You'll note within your packet, we listed all the original conditions from 2015. This, in essence, is the deleting of condition number seven. And the Planning Commission had a public hearing on this on their meeting of July the 2nd, and they voted six to zero to recommend approval. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Baldwin? Thank you, sir. With that, I'll now open the public hearing on UP-19-12. If you desire to speak at this public hearing, please come to the lectern. You'll, please state your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes. Is there anybody in the audience want to speak on this matter? This is a public hearing on UP-19-12. Does anybody want to speak? See you none? This public hearing is closed.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve, and it's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question, all in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Thank you. Which brings us to City Manager's Report. Our first item is 19-253, the consideration and adoption of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes. An ordinance accepting a public safety answering point grant in the amount of $3,000 from the Virginia 911 Service Board and appropriating said sum in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for Emergency Communications Unit Training.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt the ordinance. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question, all in favor of the motion, which is to adopt, please vote yes, opposed no. Madam Clerk? Oh, no, none of that one. That motion carries. Which brings us to item 19-254, which is a consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance appropriating $1,88,645 from the Waste Management Fund unassigned fund balance and transferring the said amount to the Waste Management Building Construction Project in the FY 2020 Capital Improvement Fund for the construction of a new waste management building.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Speaker.
Pardon me?
Yes.
We have a motion for...we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We're now ready to discuss this matter. And we do have a registered speaker, and that's Donna Si. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. The ordinance 19-254 reads that the people have requested the city council members to take over $1 million from the Waste Management Fund unassigned fund and transfer that money to the Waste Management Building Construction Project for the year 2020 Capital Improvement Fund to build a new waste management building. There is no Waste Management Fund unassigned balance. There is no Waste Management Building Construction Project for the year 2020 listed in the Capital Improvement Fund. If it is, show me. Look at the Public Works General Services Organizational Chart. There are 55 positions for the Waste Management Fund. Next, look at the Capital Improvement. The mission statement reads, "The Capital Improvement Program will strive to be reflective of efforts to manage competing capital needs while protecting the lasting financial sustainability of the city." Capital Improvement Plan goes on to read, "Under the municipal facilities heading, the city's court facility need for replacement and refurbishment. Also, funding includes projects for residential and commercial densities and also new facilities." Under the Strategy Plan, it reads, "Prioritization of the city's capital needs is essential in the development of the city's capital improvement program." The city created the CIP Development Team. One, to review and analyze existing and future capital projects and potential funding strategies to align with city council's prioritization and the city's vision. This team utilizes benchmark evaluation criteria to prioritize and recommend the capital budget and five-year capital improvement plan. Who are the team members who reviewed and analyzed the need for a new waste management building? Where is the benchmarking evaluation and prioritization for this building? Where is the criteria the staff used to evaluate this capital project? The budget book listed the criteria. Was quality of service? How is the new building going to enhance quality of service? Show me where this building is consistent with the comprehensive plan and city council's vision. Availability of alternative financing sources. Measures the extent a project is financed through non-city funding sources, such as private investment and federal, state, or local grants. A project will get a higher score because the project won't be paid by the city. Extent of impact. Measures the number of affected citizens by the project. A project demonstrating ability to impact a large percentage of the population is awarded a high evaluation score. It's all about money. The team is promoting Portsmouth as a welfare city. The Waste Management Fund budget for the year 2020 is over $10 million. Where is the money in the budget for a building? Let's look at the budget book for some figures. For the year 2019, the Waste Management budget was amended for an addition of $600,000. Where did that money come from? Capital improvements for Waste Management Building. Appropriated to, for the year 2019, two million, over $2 million. For the year 2020 was zero. Appropriated plan summary for municipal facilities for 2019 was over $76 million with 20, for the year 2020, money of over $17 million. Then add the five-year unappropriate money total of over $30 million. The capital improvement total at the end of, for the year 2014, will leave $107 million, I reckon, for municipal facilities capital improvement. Where is the new waste management building isolated in all these figures? There's a notation that there's a transfer of money from the Waste Management Fund to the CIP Fund for 2019 of a million dollars. There's no accountability of the people's money. There's no transparency of the people's money. It's all about money to spend, spend, spend. It's all about a team promoting Portsmouth to be a welfare city. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on this item?
Yes.
Ready for the question, all in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And this motion carries. Our next item is item 19-255, which is consideration of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance revising the monthly payment schedule for delivery of the city's local share allocation of the FY 2020 Portsmouth Public Schools operating budget.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion, which has been made and seconded? Ready for the question, all in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 19-256, which is the consideration of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read that caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting same-day access funding in the amount of $12,266.25 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Department of BHS to decrease wait times for the treatment and recovery services.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for a discussion on the motion. We do have one registered speaker, and that is Donna Si. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 19-256 is an ordinance to accept over $12,000 from category same-day access from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating this money to the, for the year 2020 Portsmouth Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund of the Portsmouth Department of Behavioral Health Services due to decrease the wait times for treatment and recovery services. There's no category in the Portsmouth Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to show criteria to evaluate and prioritize and recommend the amount of money needed for treatment and recovery services. There's no organizational chart to show what office takes care of this responsibility, and I need to see the criteria that was used to evaluate and prioritize and recommend the amount of money needed for the wait times for treatment and recovery services. Will Mrs. Breakwith, the director, be available to show me the paperwork used to get this money? Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on the motion? Ready for the question, all in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 19-257, which is the consideration and adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, please read the caption of that ordinance, please.
Yes. An ordinance accepting Step VA funding in the amount of $195,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Department of BHS to provide and coordinate outpatient services.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for a discussion, and we do have one registered speaker, and that's Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 19-257 is an ordinance to accept $195,000 from category Step Virginia, from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating this money to the, for the year 2020 Portsmouth Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund of the Portsmouth Department of Behavioral Health Services to provide and coordinate outpatient services. There's no category in the Portsmouth Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to show criteria to evaluate and prioritize and recommend the amount of money needed for outpatient services. There's no organizational chart to show what office takes care of this responsibility, and I need to see the criteria that was used to evaluate and prioritize and recommend the amount of money needed for the outpatient services. And will Ms. Breakwith, the director, be available to show me the paperwork used to get this money?
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 19-258, consideration and adoption of a certain resolution. And would you read the caption of the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution establishing a committee for the purpose of developing a school funding formula for the city of Portsmouth.
So that we can consider their, this motion, I mean, this item, is there a motion to adopt this reso...
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded. We're ready for discussion. The chair recognizes Councilman Glover.
Yes, Mayor. I would like to make an amendment to the motion for this resolution to add one community member chosen by the school board and one community member chosen by city council.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second to this?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. And any discussion on the amendment? We'll vote on the amendment first, and if that passes, then we'll vote on the amended motion. Any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, the amendment passes. Now we'll consider the motion as just amended, which amends the resolution. Any further discussion on the motion? Ready for the question, all in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to new business, and this concludes...no, it doesn't. It doesn't conclude. New business, consideration of boards and commissions, item 19-259. Councilman Moody.
Mayor, I move that the following reappointments and appointments be approved. Reappointments first. Social Services Advisory Commission, Melvina Sneed. Ty Water Youth Services Commission, Catherine Grimm. Pamela Littlehill. Community Criminal Justice Board, Elaine Brethwaite. David Hackworth. Melissa Jenkins. The Honorable Brian Mills. Lopez Scott. And Behavioral Healthcare Services Advisory Board, Reverend Milton Blunt. Portsmouth Parking Authority, Pamela Wilkins. Parks and Recreation Commission, Dolores Knight. Next are the appointments for the Census Count Commission. Laurel Armstrong. Shannon Anderson. Sarah Cunningham. Terry Danaher. Tony Fogel. Mark Gudaldejatrowski. Val Jenkins. Clifford King Harpen. Clifford King Harpen. John Nelson. Dolores Parker. Barry Randall. David Summers. Cheryl Stallings. Lamont Tillage. Elvina Johnson-Williams. That concludes it, Mayor.
Is there a second? We have a motion to make these reappointments and appointments. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to items submitted by council. We removed the resolution. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items that will happen before we meet again, or items of note to remind the public. The city's three-one-one information number went live on July first. It's being very well received. Three-one-one will be the number to dial for all non-emergency issues and questions, and they are available Monday through Friday, eight a.m. to five p.m. The second item is the Alpha Best Extended Daycare, which is going to replace the city's six-to-six before-and-after-school program this coming fall. The city is doing a hiring event for these folks, and it is, will be again tomorrow, July the tenth, from ten-thirty a.m. to two-thirty p.m. is the hiring event, and that's at seventeen oh one High Street. We have Sunset Thursdays coming up. This Thursday, July eleventh, will be the original Rondells, and the following Thursday, the eighteenth, will be Second Wind, and rounding out July on the twenty-fifth will be the band Soul Intent. These events are free and open to the public at the foot of High Street, at High Street Landing, from six-thirty p.m. to nine p.m. And if you come, you'll see most of your city council there having a wonderful time. And then, on Saturday, July twentieth, from noon to three, at Woodrow Wilson High School, the city will be sponsoring a Chat, Chew, and You event, engaging the community on quality of life issues. There will be activities and presentations on hurricane safety, informational handouts. There will be children's activities. That is free and open to the public as well, from noon to three p.m. on Saturday, the twentieth, at Wilson High School. And that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. We next come to report on pending items, item nineteen two sixty-one.
Mayor, there are no pending items.
Thank you. This concludes our regular agenda.